Yep. Good afternoon. Welcome to the April 23 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. I would ask that if you have pagers, cellphones, or similar devices, if you would silence those now, we would appreciate it. If you are not the applicant and you've come to address us about a case today, there are sheets on the table right outside the chambers. If you would fill that in and then just give it to our clerk here, we'd be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And with that, we'll go to approval of the April 9 minutes. Commissioners? Move approval. We have a motion, second, to approve the minutes of April 9. Cast your votes, and the minutes are approved. J.J., continuance requests.
Two uncontested continuances today. Item 22, PC 10-405, request deferred to June 11th. And item 23, CE 903, has been withdrawn.
Anyone here today to talk to us about either of those items? Take a motion.
Move the uncontested requests.
Need a second? And so the continuance requests, cast your votes, and they're approved. Additional requests?
Have several new continuances. Item 6, SPUD 815, request to be withdrawn. Item 9, PUD 1577, deferred to May 14th. Item 10, C 6598, to May 14th. Item 11, SPUD 812, request withdrawal. Item 19, C 6719, to May 14th. And item 5A, C 6638, to May 14th.
Anyone come to talk to us about any of those cases just read today? 6, 9, 10, 11, 19, or 5A?
Move the new requests.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, hang on just a second. We've got a person on number 11 that come up here, and I don't know whether he wants to come up and speak or not. Do you want to come up and speak?
Well, sir, I'm just a citizen.
You need to come up.
Well, thank you for your service, and I'm just here as a citizen. And I want to thank you.
We hear from citizens.
J.J., is item 22 continued on the agenda also?
Yes.
And you read that one, sorry. Don't remember hearing it.
No, I skipped that one. Item 22.
To June 11th?
Yes, to 6/11.
Okay. Okay. Motion for the additional continuances? We have it. Okay. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? Oh, good items for individual consideration.
First item is the consent docket. It's item 1, CE 905, application to close an easement located at 11033 Quail Creek Road. Item 2, C 6163, extension of preliminary plat of the commons at Greenlee Chase. And 3, C 6713, final plat of Ponderosa Estates.
Anyone come to talk to us about items 1, 2, and 3 today?
Move the consent docket.
Second a motion.
Way of it. Motion is second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes. That's approved.
First item for public hearing is item 4. It's SN 083, resolution changing the name of Crossroads Boulevard to Plaza Mayor Boulevard.
No one has signed up, certainly. And this is a variance, I think. Next one is, okay. Motion is second to approve item 4. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 5, SN 084, consider a resolution changing the name of Southeast 6th Street, line between Lincoln and Laird to Riverport, Riversport Drive.
No one signed up?
Move variance. Second a motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance. Cast your votes. We need to approve the item as well. We need to.
Move the application. Second a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the application. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 6 has been withdrawn. Item 7, SP 479, application for special permit for automobile sales located at 2801 North MacArthur Boulevard.
Is the applicant here? Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Ali Almazana. I own Ford and Auto Sales, it's on 1204 North Portland. And I tried to get a special permit to be able to sell cars in that location.
And this is an existing business, is it?
It used to be a car lot before, but I guess they didn't renew the license, so the permit went away, so I have to renew it now.
Okay. No one signed up?
I move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 7. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item 8, C 6716, preliminary plat of Western Townhomes located east of Western Avenue and south of Northwest 164th.
Mr. Chairman and Members of Commission, Brian Kuhn with Hewitt Zollers, representing the applicant. I know that you have received two protest letters. Our plat, this is a preliminary plat, matches the master development plan, which went through PUD approval many months ago, so we comply with that, and we also comply with subdivision regulations. There are five TEs, and we agree with all of them. And I also agreed with Plan Commissioner Cooper and Gales that we will notify these two people between now and when the final plat comes before you in a couple of weeks. I don't know what their issues are, what their concerns are. They did comment that they didn't get notice, but the ownership list has the homeowner association listed as one of the people that did get notice. It had a different address, which probably the homeowner association still is being taken care of by the developer, so that's where the notice went. So proper notice did go to the homeowner association, and there were several neighbors in that. We're five, over 500 feet away, our boundary away from their boundary of their plat, with a huge creek, lots of trees between, so I'll call them and see what their concerns are, and we'll listen to them at final plat if they still have them.
Okay, just a quick question, Brian. I'm looking at the common areas. Where would your amenities go? Do you know yet?
Pretty much all along the perimeter. We're going to have walking trails along the creek area. Lot of, lot of green space on these plats. I think there's, I'm not sure how many acres, but it's a lot. And pools, we've turned in a letter of what we're going to do.
All right. No one signed up, Commissioners?
Brian, I've got a question. I don't know if you can answer, or if staff needs to answer, but my question is, out of 173 units, I think, is the development, that we're waiving the traffic study?
Yes, sir.
Can you speak to that, or does staff need to speak?
I can. If it's not, if it doesn't work for you, then I guess they can too. You know, when we first turn in applications, that's one of the requirements. We send a letter to traffic, say, do we, what level of study do we need to do? They analyze it, they get back to us. In this case, they said a traffic study is not warranted, not needed. Western's already been widened, 115th or 164th has been widened, there's left turn lanes at the corner, there's signals, full signals, so there's really not, it just didn't warrant it because of all the density out there already.
Did you not get a copy of the two protest letters?
I got them this hour, about an hour, hour before today, yes.
Okay.
And so we will call both of them before, probably tomorrow or Monday, and see what their concerns are. If we need to meet, they can come to the office and meet, and we'll see what their concerns are.
The thought is, is that, you know, if they still want to show up, then they can show up for the preliminary in a couple of weeks.
It'd be a little bit late at that stage, though, I think, because you're doing a final plat, then.
Well.
No one signed up?
I think it meets subdivision regulations, and there isn't really no reason, you know, to stop the process.
You're right.
I don't think.
There is not.
I move for adoption.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 8. Cast your votes. It's approved. Thank you.
Item 12, SPUD 814, application by Richard Swerengen to rezone 604 North Rockwell Avenue.
My name is Dennis Box, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. And they're coming up as we're speaking. This is an application, and if you look at the plan, the plan calls for this to be industrial. More importantly, if you all have had the opportunity to drive out there along Melrose Lane, all around this area, you're going to find mostly metal, but all kinds of warehouse uses. My client has a use in close proximity, and he's going to build his own building and move his business. And that's why we've got this application in front of you. He's here if you want to ask him any questions. But what we're trying to do is fit between a fire station on the north and some apartments that have had their better day on the south. We've gone and gotten a petition from the property owners that are directly to the east of this property, and they have supported the application and the petition. We showed them a copy of the site plan and told them what we're going to do, and told them we have two access points along Manchester, which they're supportive of. So with that, we, the staff has recommended approval subject to the TEs. There's a couple of TEs I'd like to modify a little bit, subject to your all's approval. We can agree with TE 1, 3, 6, 8, and 9 on 2, there's a possibility that my client will actually expand and use the entire property, so we would like to have the warehouse use on Track 2 also if they have their own business that expands. If they don't, it'll be personal storages as depicted. But when we deal with the curb cuts, if, if we expand and use it just for our business, we will not have any curb cuts on Manchester. If we put personal storage on there, then we'd like to have one curb cut on the very south side of Track 2, an emergency access back to the north side. And as indicated, we've talked to the neighbors about this, and they're supportive. We're agreeable with an eight-foot sign on this spud along Rockwell. If we do put many storage, we'd like to have, and I'm sorry Mr. Bryan didn't hear because I think this would make him stand up, we'd like a five-foot sign, five feet by 10 feet on the square footage, if we have personal storage on Manchester. So we've raised the bar to go to five-feet signs if we do personal storage.
That's lowering the bar, but we'll go with you.
Yeah. Well put. But those are the only changes we'd like to make. In other words, this might end up, my client might take the whole property. If he does, he'll just have curb cuts on Rockwell, only a sign on Rockwell. If they do have many storage, then we'd like to have the one curb cut on Manchester, and then the one emergency. When you go out and see the property, the, one of the auto repair, which is a picture that is in that packet, they have two access points on Manchester. So with that, we're here to answer any questions if you have any.
Are we agreeing that there's not going to be any EMD in the signage?
We are agreeable.
Dennis, what's the dog's name?
The what?
The dog's name. On the second page of your exhibit here.
I don't know, but I.
Sir. The junkyard dog?
Yes, sir.
Tell us about the condition of Manchester.
It's a small street, not very wide. It's not in too bad a shape as far as driving on it, but the only two access points you have are the access points from the auto garage, and then the houses, which the supporters have signed our petition, they don't have any access. They have big backyards, and as you can tell, they store a lot of materials that might be appropriate for many storage, so. But it's a, it's a little street. We understand, we've agreed to meet all the engineering requirements, so we understand that if, if we did put a curb cut in, we'd have to comply with engineering, and don't know if that's possible or not, but that's a future consideration.
Tell me about the staff comment for TE 7, the reason, you're asking for no curb cuts. Just explain that.
Manchester is substandard even by residential standards. It's about 16 feet wide, no curb and gutter. And even the two zoning applications to the south of this, the I-1 at the corners of Melrose and Manchester, were denied access to Manchester as well for that reason.
Maybe they have, maybe that's why they have the dog. Because they have two access points. Anyway, we, we understand we'd have to meet engineering requirements, whether, you know, so we don't know what will happen in the future, but the, the main thing that we want to do is provide my client the opportunity to come and build his business here and grow and expand.
You're just using that for emergency access too, aren't you?
If, we won't have any access if it's our business. If it's many storage, we'd just have the one access point on the south part, and then the north part would be emergency only.
Okay, but that goes out on Manchester?
Yes.
Yeah. And what's, what's your business?
Come up, introduce yourself.
Richard Swerengen. Auto batteries, full line of batteries, wholesale, retail. We've actually been in business on the corner of Rockwell and Melrose since 1983, parts business, and then the battery business since '94.
So will everything on your property be under a roof inside a warehouse?
Yes.
So it'll go outside storage, that sort of thing?
Yes, sir.
And Dennis, one question. You've, you've said, you know, should with the many storage concept go when you have the curb cut on Manchester to meet engineering standards? Can I clarify that by saying you agree to improve the street to?
If it's required. Yes, sir. If required.
Thank you.
No one signed up?
So do we have some language, then, that we would use to substitute for TE 7?
We could, we could add two things. One, unless that portion of Track 2 is used for many storage, and subject to compliance with all engineering requirements for the city of Oklahoma City.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a run of this. How are we going to modify number 2?
I think we just eliminate it.
Eliminate it, I think. It's just a blehunk.
Eliminate it, okay. All right, I'm going to move approval on variances on the, take the TEs. We're going to eliminate number 2. We're going to eliminate, are we going to eliminate number 4 as well?
There'll be one sign on Manchester that will be five feet tall.
Five square feet, okay.
And 10 feet wide?
It'll be 50 square feet.
Fifty. Yeah, so five by 10.
Okay. So one sign allowed on Manchester, 50 square feet. Number 5, we're okay with, Dennis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Number 7 will be modified to state what was stated a minute ago.
Only be accessed if we have many storage, and it'll be subject to approval of all engineering requirements for the city of Oklahoma City.
It'll be a curb cut and subject to city engineering approval.
Okay.
Second.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion to approve item 12 as condition. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 13, SPUD 816, application to rezone 2424 Northwest 178th Street.
Is the applicant here? Give us your name and address, please.
David Crukil, 5455 Monticello, Dallas, Texas, 75206. Thank you for having me today. I'm with Emerald Spring Estates. We are based out of Dallas. We're a assisted living and memory care developer, owner, and long-term holder of our assets. We are excited to be proposing our project on 178th between Penn, and now I'm drawing a blank on the cross street, but we're at Penn. Forgive me for the blank there. I've got, if I may approach, I've got just a color rendering and a color site plan that we've progressed since we've made the application. What's being passed around is, is specific to our site plan. It's, you know, it shows, represents the two buildings in elevation. Some, you know, the landscaping isn't always necessarily correct, but it gives a good indication of what the buildings are that we're proposing and how the site lays out. We received a copy of the staff report, and we were essentially, we had no problems with what was in there. I've spoken to staff and the commissioner for the ward, and there's some recommendations, but before I guess I go into that, I, you know, I don't know if there's any specific information that I can provide for you guys, or if you have any specific questions before I go into that route.
Nick, you might go through those, and you might head off some questions.
Okay, perfect. Well, I'm going to take just maybe 30 seconds or a minute just to kind of explain what we do and what we are proposing. As I mentioned, we are in the assisted living and memory care business. What we build and operate is really the antithesis of what most people think of when they think of assisted living, and what I mean by that is we are not a large institutional, sterile-type environment. We build between 10,000 and 12,000 square foot facilities that are designed, not only on the exterior, but on the interior, to basically feel, smell, touch like a single-family home. We'll have 18, 18 to 20 bedrooms here with, with 19 to 21 bathrooms, meaning that every bedroom has their own bathroom, and that's important, and I'll touch on that in a second, with an open concept great room where there's a kitchen, living room, dining room, open, you know, large congregation area. It really does feel like a large, single-family home. That ties into the model of care that we provide, again, being the non-antithesis, or the antithesis of the institutional, non-institutional environment. And what I mean by that, especially in the memory care side of things, is, you know, a lot of times, just like when you were in school, the residents are assigned, and I, residents, we are non-medical, I want to specify that real quick, you know, you're assigned a number in school, and in the large facilities, the residents are assigned a number essentially, and caretaker 1 has to take care of resident A, have him bathed by 9:15, and it's very rigid, and we operate in a different manner. It's the quality of life, integrity, and maintaining integrity for our residents as of the utmost importance. That's why you'll see on our site plan, we have two buildings versus one. We still need to operate with economies of scale, but we don't want to deviate from the model in which we started our business, which is, again, quality of life, integrity, residential style, style environment. So instead of coming and building one 20, 25,000 square foot facility, we build two large, single-family homes in a nutshell. That being said, I, as I mentioned, I've gone through the staff report and spoken to the commissioner, and we've got some adjustments that we're going to make. The number 2 of the conditions, I just, you know, wanted to clarify, if you look at our site plan, our intent is to have a building fairly close to the street with the parking in between, and have our entries at the corner of the inside, if you will. We had initially made the request and the application for our setback to be measured from the 33-foot statutory right-of-way. I have since found out that we're going to be required through the permitting, and if we plat, through the platting process, we're going to have to dedicate essentially 17 more feet. So we're going to have a 50-foot right-of-way from the center line. So rather than measuring 25 feet from the 33-foot current right-of-way line, I would just ask if we can measure it eight feet from that, so we're essentially, have the buildings close to the street so that the parking can be in between the buildings and screened from the street. So that, that would be just one modification that I would ask. Eight foot measured from the center line of the right-of-way. 50, eight, I don't know how we would word that. Eight foot from the 50-foot center line? Is that correct? The other, other conditions we're okay with. We would like to add that we're going to have a landscape buffer on the, or landscape strip, rather, on the south end, close to the southern, single-family residential. We're still working to get an absolute definition of where the easement is, but there is a natural gas line that runs through there, and it goes back a very long time ago, so it's not fully defined, but we anticipate being in the 50-foot range is where it's going to tie down. So if, if I can get closer than that 50 feet for that 10-foot strip, I'm happy to, but it may be that, you know, I'll have my 50-foot easement, or whatever that easement is defined as, and then I'll have a 10-foot landscape strip, and then I will have my building. So that way, we can do some landscaping with trees and whatnot between the single-family residential to the south and our buildings. So 10-foot landscape strip on the south end to be essentially between the building and what is defined as the pipeline easement. The second is signage. We have no intention for non-accessory signs, and I think it was, when we were working on writing this, it was just an oversight on our part, so non-accessory signs not being allowed. Directional signs and building signage, we would like to limit to four foot by four foot versus, I think it's 12 by 8 right now, but I would like to make sure we're allowed to have directional signs, so we can say, no, building 1, building 2, things of that nature. And I think that touches upon the items. Oh, no, I'm sorry, there was one more. We are going a little bit lower than the standard for the masonry requirement, and that's one of the reasons I wanted you guys to see the color elevation. It's not so that we can go with a, you know, cheaper, less desirable material. It truly is just to, it's indicative of the residential environment that we're trying to create in our elevation. So I just want to clarify that any material that's not masonry, and masonry meaning stone or brick, will be of a hardy plank-type material versus metal or, you know, vinyl siding or anything of that nature.
Nick, does that cover it?
That covered the items we discussed, and that's why I suggested he throw them out first before there were questions or additional discussion.
Okay.
Those were the items I had, I had picked up on.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone else? No one has signed up? I'm sorry? Oh, this, I didn't realize it. Shamika Mack. If you'll pull that down and tell us your name and address, please.
Shamika Mack, 2417 Northwest 177th Street. So I will be, my backyard will be where he is.
Okay.
Basically, I didn't really want to say anything. I just had questions, and they said that if I wanted to ask questions, then I had to sign up. But I think he answered most of them. But I did want to know, like, is the only entrance going to be from 178, or is it going to be off of Silverhawk Way at all? Because there's a park right there.
Our property doesn't have 178, so we'll, we, our entrance will, I'm sorry, doesn't have, so we'll have one entry off of 178.
Okay, and then my only other question was, like, the two buildings, is it going to be side by side, or one run in front of?
Side by side.
Okay. Those are the only questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with the changes he, he read to the signage, the offset screening and building materials, all will, will approve.
Could I just keep clarification on what TE 2 is going to read? I'm still, I'm just a little unclear. I just want to make sure I understand.
I believe he wants an eight-foot setback measured at the 50-foot from center line.
Correct.
Rather than a 25.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 13 as condition. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 14, SPUD 817, application by AAB Engineering to rezone 10959 Southwest 59th Street.
My name's Alan Betch, and I'm with AAB Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. This SPD is for a Dollar General at, on the northwest corner. The property is abutted by C3 zoning, which is, I think, a closed-down, talking to the neighborhood store on, on the west. We had a neighborhood meeting on Monday. Three people came out, and they were all in support. support of the application, or at least didn't, didn't have any objections. We're in agreement with the staff's recommendations with two exceptions that we've talked to the commissioner about. One is on seven, and we would, we're requesting that we have masonry, full masonry on the south and east faces of the building, a forty-two inch Wayne's Coat of masonry on the western-facing edges of the building, and then allowing metal panel on the northern face of the building. It's in keeping the adjacent buildings, or mostly metal buildings that are out there today, it's, it's definitely keeping masonry from the visible areas that are adjacent to it. With the way the site lays out, there's very little room between the northern line, I think we have a sixty-foot, more or less green space along the northern, between the northern boundary and what will be the north side of the building, roughly. The other exception that we wanted was on number nine, there is a significant amount of grade change across the site, so because of that, obviously, we're doing quite a bit of grading whenever we get into it, so preservation of trees isn't, there's not very many significant trees on site, but with the bulk grading we're doing, there's just not much room to save any of them. You grade a ninety-one hundred square foot pad in the middle of a two-acre tract, there's just not a whole lot of room around that. The other exception that we were looking at and talking to the commissioner this morning was with regard to screening on the northern line, the, the recommendation is for wood, stone, or masonry be allowed for the screening, and we would request that we be allowed to provide screening in the form of landscaping per the code for residential buffering in the code, which I think is eight feet forever, I think it's eight-foot spacing for evergreens that create an opaque barrier, and then the commissioner, I think, was wanting to limit that to a masonry screening fence instead of allowing wood, if that, if I'm not mistaken.
Don't you own the property just to the north of that, your client, don't?
The seller does, there'll actually be a-
How wide is that property on Westminster?
There, on Westminster, it's, it's about double, we're almost splitting in half, so I think we're getting three thirty-eight, so there's around three hundred-ish feet that'll be left north of, of this tract. That's, that's owned by the seller.
I don't have any problem with the, with the, the trees, you know, as, as long as that it is a good screening, because we really don't have anything back there that we need to screen, but, you know, and I'm sure with, you're, you're not gonna build a house back there, and even if there was a house built, you know, but anyway, I don't have any problem with that. The, what I have requested was either Wayne's Coat to the west side and to fully brick the front and the east side.
Yes, sir.
On that east side, rather than just a layer of brick, we need, put some kind of design in the brick rather than just looking at a brick wall.
Okay.
And you can do that, I think, pretty easily and not a lot of cost, so. And where they're actually putting this building is, I think, is a really unique way, you know, they got away from the corner and are gonna enter on the, on the west side from 59th Street and actually move the building, you know, the entrance back away from that intersection. And, you know, the way the building, actually, I thought the building fronted on the west, but it actually fronts on the, on the south side, so.
Yeah, this, there's two different proto, or there's actually three different prototypes that Dollar's currently using for this size building. Their preferred is to enter onto the, the shorter end of the building, but they have an alternative to enter on the side, it just, they still need to turn the whole building from a truck access to face the other way, and it just doesn't fit for, on this site. This is really kind of the best entrance, and it, from the visibility for access and everything coming off of 59th, we really felt was the best way to get into the site and keep it away from the intersection.
Yeah. I just live about, probably, I don't know, half, maybe three-quarters of a mile to the north of there off of Westminster, so I think it's a good location, I think it's good zoning. I don't know, do we have any protest?
No, no one signed up?
Nobody signed up. With that, I would recommend approval.
Is that with the modifications?
With, well, the only thing is, on, on number nine, they're just not, the way that is located on there, I'm sure you'll leave all the trees that you can leave, but the way, the, the parking requirements and, you know, what he's gonna do, there should be a few trees on the east side of that that could be left. Let's leave there and do what you can to leave trees, okay?
We've looked at the, we've looked at the grading, we were still providing detention on-site, kind of at the southeast corner, and with Birmingham and how, just trying to get down to grade and get the detention facility into the east, there just really wasn't much room, I mean, we're tying in tight. What, to the extent we can, though, yes, absolutely, I mean, we'll save every tree that's, that's viable.
And that's what nine says?
Yeah, it's, I just want to make sure whenever we get into it that we can't, the ones that we can't save, it's understood that we can make it fit, so.
I think we'll leave Shell. We have a motion and a second to approve item fourteen, cast your votes, and it's approved.
Commissioner Yocel, on that, on the previous item, just note to staff that it is listed as ten nine five nine Southwest 59th, it's actually southeast, so I just want that revised.
If you noticed on your packet, when you first got your packet, it was messed up with one on Peabody, so.
Item fifteen is SPOD fifteen eighty-one, application by market at Bentwood, rezone eighty-four oh one, Highway one fifty-two.
Charles Allen with Allen Engineering, the owner of Dan Miners is here also. Started this project, did the original PUD about nine years ago, since then it's changed hands two or three times. Mr. Miners just purchased the property about two months ago, he's, he's trying to develop it, eight, eight point three-three acres, has one lot at this point, and in, in constructing the road to make it a little bit more marketable. He is proposing to put a masonry wall along the west property line, that'll be a six-to-eight foot tall masonry wall, then with landscaping or tree-scaping, you might call it, along the right-of-way, along the street right-of-way there. We agree with, I guess, all the, well, three of the TEs, one, four, and five, two and three are dealing with signage, and we prefer, if we could, since we've specified that we'd submit specific site plans, that we kind of defer those conversations until we have an actual plan to talk about.
I had a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
And I was noticing that you indicate that you'll not place any establishments, fast food, border windows, and drive-ins, among other things, within a hundred and fifty feet of the residentially zoned, reused property. And while that's really a good try, it's really hard looking at the site for me to see where you can put those uses that would not be a problem for those residents.
You know, I think, you know, most of the uses are gonna be up along the Highway one fifty-two right-of-way anyways, so.
So can we limit them to that front edge, those uses in particular? It's the outdoor, it's the-
You mean just so that they're abutting the one fifty-two right-of-way? I mean, most likely, they will be, I mean, there're gonna be-
I would think so as well.
Three or four lots, and they're just gonna stair-step down north of the south.
Even there, there are some people that might be impacted by that, but I, I think that it makes a lot more sense there, where it's the furthest from the residences, and if we can limit it to that, I think that'd be very helpful.
You know, and that'll come back, you know, with the site-specific site plans that we submit for, you know, planning commission approval also, I think. So, I mean, we, we'll take that, note that, I guess, and make, try to work that in our, our layout with you, but I guess as far as specifying a distance at this point or against the right-of-way, and we could, we could play games with abutting the right-of-way and have it all the way on the other side of the property. This way, it's at least a hundred and fifty feet away from the property line.
Let's talk about how many uses there might be, and then how many signs you think there might be associated with how many uses, and what are we gonna look at along one fifty-two?
Well, and we can talk about signage now and later, but at any point, I certainly would not be in support of there being EMD signage.
I think we, you know, after we take out the right-of-way, we've got a little common area up on the corner there that we're probably gonna have a little monument sign, directional sign, that sort of thing, we're gonna end up with about six acres, assuming one to one and a half acres for a site at the smallest, probably, you're looking, you know, roughly four to five sites, possibly six.
Nick, Charles, let's go at a little different direction. As I understand, you'd like to delete TE's two and three and consider signage out of the specific plan state.
Correct.
That's just, in my mind, contrary to the way, way it should be done. Should be addressed at the PUD, so let me come a different way. When we leave TE two and three in, and you want to add vantage to either one of those saying, while they're prohibited, they can come back and ask for something if warranted or something like that, just to take them out, I can't support that.
Okay.
And you can always, you know, I don't think we need that language in there, you can always come back, but I, I just can't delete them and go wide open on signing. That just doesn't, doesn't seem consistent with, with anything we've, we're trying to do.
Well, I don't think we want to, I mean, I definitely want to eliminate item three, electronic display messages. We already have, there are already two existing signs out there, the Brahms immediately north is gonna have, make it a third, so I, I would have a hard time understanding why three owners are allowed to have signs of this size and, you know, electronic display, and we're not.
Could depend on what the underlying zoning was when they built their-
Well, the Brahms was just approved three months ago.
I'm sorry?
The Brahms is immediately north of this site.
Yeah, but was it a PUD or built on C3 site?
It is a PUD, and I remember-
Okay.
-the case, and we had a very specific discussion on the signage, and decided that it was appropriate. And I'm not saying these would not be appropriate, but I, I do believe-
You want to see them.
On a just cart-bonk basis to take it out is, is inconsistent with what we've been trying to do.
I agree. I mean, Charles, if, if, I can't support this if we take this out this time. If you want to come back and make an argument later for one or the other, you know, regarding one or the other, I, I'm sure we'd be glad to listen to it, but I don't feel comfortable taking them out now either. And then, so we're not allowed any electronic display messages? No, you can come back and make your case later if you'd like to do that. How do we do that after we've, after the PUD is approved? So Bentwood another bud? We can add language to- I mean, we just want to stay consistent with what's already there, what's already been approved. And I don't know that what you're gonna put out there is gonna be consistent with what's already there, you just have to look at it. That's the whole process of the specific site plan. Okay, well, that's, well, that's the way I feel about it, so that's kind of where I'm at.
I'll just say I'm gonna side with Buck, because if you come back with something that's at the bank or across the street, catacornered from the bank, I guarantee you that's not gonna work.
Pardon me now?
The sign that is at the bank, obnoxious is the most, that's the nicest word I can say, the one that's catacornered that says SPOD, SPOD seven oh six, which has no building and only a sign-
Right.
-is borderline obnoxious, and so I think the Brahms sign is substantially less, and I'll be honest, it's not, there is no possible way that I could support it, I would stand with Buck if it's gonna be anything near what the bank or the proposed use unit is that's over there, catacornered, it just, that is not, that is not what this city wants, it's not what we want to see as planning commissioners, and I won't speak for the city council, but I would say that they would stand with us.
Hello, my name's Dan Miners, I'm the developer. All I'm wanting to try to do is just not close myself off to a future client that, for example, like a Sonic or somebody, most Sonics have those electronic message board signs, so I don't want to say to Sonic, well, you can't have a message board sign, well, then they're, they're not even gonna talk to me. So that's what I'm trying to do, is just not paint myself into a corner, that's why I was wanting to do the site specific, you know, for them to come back, kind of like what Brahms did. So is there any avenue to do something like that?
Well, I kind of think what's been offered would, would allow that. To leave it, leave it wide open, we could get any kind of a sign that, say, C3 would permit.
Okay, but, but we, like, if Sonic would, I'm just using Sonic as an example, if they would come to me and say, we want to do a Sonic there, but we want to have our message board up like we have all over the city, pretty much, is that something that we could come back site-specific and they would maybe have a chance to do it?
Yes, that's what I mean, that's what, that's what they're saying. We can add language that says the height, size, and amount of EMD signage can be reviewed and approved with a subsequent specific plan.
Okay.
That's fine, I just don't want the wording to say, no EMD, EDMs are allowed in this-
We're just saying-
Review them on a case-by-case basis.
Say, may be approved on a case-by-case basis.
Because, I mean, that's gonna kill a Sonic deal right on.
No. It's not gonna say shall be approved on a case, but it's gonna say may be approved on a case-by-case basis.
I'd like it to be appro, or be reviewed and approved at the specific site plan state.
Reviewed and approved means you're gonna get one automatically, and that's not what we're saying.
Reviewed for approval.
Considered for approval. I suppose that it's been looked at, the cul-de-sac is big enough for trash trucks and, and fire trucks and stuff.
Actually, the cul-de-sac for the plumerie plat that's coming up after this, we're enlarging that to a hundred and twenty-foot diameter, the one that's on your plan right now only shows an eighty-foot diameter.
Okay, let's get the sign language the way we want it so that this can go forward for a vote. Sir? Oh, well, you signed up for both of them, I couldn't see, I saw sixteen, come forward. Put your name and address, please.
My name's Brian Bedeker, six three hundred Bentley Drive, I live right behind the Ramjack, which is Spud six forty-six.
Okay.
The plans, our neighborhood is a very quiet neighborhood, we don't really get a whole lot of road noise from one fifty-two and everything, and my house has a brick wall behind it between me and Ramjack. If it is approved, I would request that they keep the brick wall the same as what has already been in place, so that way it doesn't look different. But having restaurants and noise and everything directly behind our housing addition, we have a very peaceful, calm office complex there that there isn't a whole lot of noise from, having a Sonic there would certainly change it, having restaurants, you know, shopping centers, stuff like that, and our neighborhood association is supposed to be here, and we would not like- would not like that, for lack of a better term.
Commissioners, any questions to Brian? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think, I think everyone would agree with that. I think the problem there is that you're right along a major commercial thoroughfare, so it's going to, it's going to be hard to prevent development along there going forward. You know, and certainly some of that development may be that type of development. I'm not sure what he's got in mind exactly, but.
Agreed, but like having that street, I assume that the light dotted line is a street path towards the back of the lot. That's the backyards of a lot of kids. You know, a brick wall is not going to protect a kid.
Is the, is the brick wall part of your neighborhood? I mean, has it been the?
No.
That was put in by?
It was required by Ramjack.
Okay. So, Charles, you guys have a problem with continuing that feature?
No, well, I mean, we're doing a 68-foot wall with trees.
Brick wall?
I think it shows.
Pardon me? Brick wall?
For it's masonry, maybe, yeah, it'll be a masonry.
I mean, that's two foot thick to actually stop something from coming through.
Okay.
Just for, from a grading standpoint, the wall will be up probably, oh, at least a foot, foot and a half above the actual road, so it's going to be elevated. The road will be sitting down a little bit, so, you know, a 6 to 8-foot wall is going to end up, you know, 10 feet above the center of the road probably in certain places.
Let's go back to the sign language again if we're going to deal with this. 2C confuses me, sign poles, we're going to have 8-foot monument signs, but we're going to have sign poles? I don't, well, what exactly are we talking about? Those are the appearance, the adopted appearance corridor sign guidelines. Now, they may not be consistent with your PUD sign guidelines, but if there, if a sign was on a pole, the pole would have to be covered with some kind of, boxed in with some kind of material. And what height are we talking about? Well, height that's in their PUD now is the maximum. They have no limit on height or size.
The Brahms to the, to the north is going to be 25 feet, so, you know, we won't be any taller than that, I assure you, and we will not have pole signs.
Yeah, I think what we were talking about was the size and height of any freestanding accessory signs would be reviewed by the planning commission at a specific plan stage, and the amount of EMD and the EMD operation level would also be reviewed at the specific plan.
Right.
All right?
Right.
So they'll be back to negotiate.
No, we're just trying.
The height and size and the EMD.
That's.
Well, I wasn't thinking of that degree of specificity. I was thinking that TE 3 would read something like, EMD signs will generally not be permitted within the PUD, and then some, after that, maybe however specific application of the EMD will be considered on a case-by-case basis.
I'd prefer not to be so negative, I guess.
Pardon?
What? I would prefer not to be so negative, I guess, as not.
Well, I, yeah, you would prefer it to be deleted, I understand that, but, yeah, what we're trying to communicate here, and maybe we're not doing a very good job, but I thought Todd did a very good job, what we're trying to communicate here is, we're not seeing this site as ripe for a bunch of EMD sign.
And.
If you can come up with a specific use and make the case for one, we're saying, yeah, bring it to us, we'll listen and consider it, but generally, no, we don't want EMD signs there.
I really don't have a.
At least that's my thought.
But the problem with this site is it's sat vacant almost for nine years since, since the original PUD 1135 that I wrote, presented to you, the whole concept of the whole neighborhood. Now we're just trying to make it a little bit more marketable. As soon as we start putting in there not available for EMDs, then the potential sales are going to go away, and it'll sit for another nine years with a road that people will drive down and dump their trash on.
Well, the road hadn't been in its present shape for the last nine years either. So, you know, I'm more concerned with the way the road is located than I am anything on this plat. Looks like that the road was stubbed out on the, the original plat to come through where it's stubbed. Why is the road, why do you have to have the road back at the back, behind those houses?
We're trying to move all the usage as close to the Highway 152 as possible, create a little bit more of a buffer, noise barrier between it and the residential.
Okay, that subdivision to the, to the north of there, I mean, that's the way it's designed, basically the way that stub out shows on there. And I know that, you know, that most, the ones on the south side of that street can't face 152, but it looks like to me that, I don't like the way that thing is designed. That's my, my problem.
Unless we get some satisfactory sign language here, I don't think we're going to get an approval today. I mean, I'm just reading the tea leaves around the horseshoe. Janice?
As for me, I mean, I think Commissioner Gales has hit the nail on the head. My preference to the applicant would be to express to the applicant that we are not in favor of EMD signs at this location. They have a specific use and a specific application that they want to present to us, that's one thing, but, you know, I don't think we should water down that language to a point where institutional memory may fail at some point, and it may read like, oh, that'd be fine, because that's, that's definitely not the message I'm wanting to send.
Well, I guess at this point, that's the question, Charles, obviously, we're not, we're not making a great headway on the sign issue. Do you want to continue this a couple of weeks, work on it, think about it?
You want me to come up with the language?
Well, yes, you certainly.
Okay.
But I think we gave you a pretty good outline.
Well, I just want to make sure it's positive towards the development of this property.
Well, you know.
So that, so that when Sonic reads it, they don't read that we're not going to be able to have a sign out here.
Well.
Why don't we just have language that, I mean, we started with early in the conversation on TE number seven, I guess it is, may be approved on a case-by-case basis?
I mean, that's the specific site plan process. That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
And that's, I just want our signs reviewed at the specific site plan. I said that at the beginning, and that's what we'd like to see. I'll change, I mean, I'll submit language and continuance in two weeks if that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going back with what Janice just said. The water now is muddied enough that I think it needs to be addressed in a TE with some degree of specificity, and I don't see us getting here today and.
Well, we spent enough time on it today that we don't want to spend anymore.
Well, I don't have a stopwatch, but one's his point about the institutional memory, yeah, I think it needs to be specific enough that, and I don't think we're getting there today, so I guess my, my question is, do you want an up or down vote today, the way it is, or do you want to continue it?
I'd rather have an up vote, but yeah, I'd rather continue it then so we can come to an agreement on the language for TE's two and three.
Well, I offered you some language, but you didn't.
I'd like it to be more favorable to somebody that reads it in the future and would be interested in purchasing a lot out here, so I guess I'll request that we continue.
Last shot at it. I believe your more favorable language is not the message we want to send.
Well, I guess then, I mean, I'm getting mixed messages then. I mean, I see a Brahms to the north gets approved, I see two existing signs out there, and now you're telling me no. Am I, am I reading that wrong?
Well, now, I'll tell you, go back and look at the planning commission meeting when we heard Brahms.
I was here.
And look at the discussion we had.
I was here.
It was a protracted discussion, and there were specific reasons, you know, we started off not in favor of that, and we were citing, I believe, I'm going from recall here, we were citing the bank on the corner as a very good reason why Brahms would be very careful in what they asked for. They came back with an argument that convinced us, you might be able to do the same thing, I don't know. Right now you can't because you don't have that degree of specifics on what you want to develop. This is still speculative, I understand, but because it's speculative, I just don't think we want to open the door for, to generally have EMD signs and pole sign, and that's sort of the direction we're heading, and I don't believe that's the direction we want to go.
Well, I'd ask for a continuance then.
Two weeks, four weeks, what do you want?
Four weeks.
Four weeks, which would be the second meeting in May, which would be the 28th, maybe? Is that right? Isn't our first meeting the 14th? May 28th? Someone will make that motion?
Someone?
We have a motion in second to continue item 15 to May 28th. Cast your votes. That's approved. Let's have a discussion between now and then.
We will, thank you.
Yeah, I imagine we want to take number 16 with that?
I think so.
Yes. Okay, we'll need another motion since we didn't include it.
Sure. But you're good with that also, you don't want to hear the plat today.
We agree with all the TE's though, if that's any consolation, I guess.
Thanks.
Not going to argue with any of those.
Do you have a second? Motion in second to continue item 16 to May 28th as well. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
We'll be back on May 28th.
Thank you.
Brian. Item 17. You can't hear you without coming to the microphone. The meeting's being recorded, so if you speak back there, it will be picked up.
I was just wondering if there's a way we can, we can request the street line instead of it being right up against the fence line, being put back 15 or 20 feet from the fence line?
I would suggest that you call Mr. Allen. Do you have, you have a phone number right there handy still on the application? I put mine in the basket. Okay. If you get in touch with him between now and then, maybe you and some of your neighbors can discuss with the applicant what they plan to do, and you maybe get some changes negotiated that way. Thank you.
Item 17, PC 10 415, application to rezon 10 701 South Sunny Lane Road.
Is the applicant here?
Hello, Britton Langdon for OK Land. Actually, negotiations to purchase the property from Mr. Wan. Answer any questions? Yeah.
So this is your project that we're looking at, actually?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Tell us what you're going to do.
We're going to build our headquarters and fabrication facilities for Midcontinent Mechanical, a new mechanical contracting company here in central Oklahoma.
Okay. And what we see depicted is generally what you have planned and you're ready to go with?
That's it. That's the front and the back.
Okay, great.
Is that building metal?
Yes.
The only question that I have about this is, on page five, there's this verbiage that it cannot be guaranteed as part of this application, but the applicant has submitted a conceptual drawing. Why are we not doing this as an SPOD so that we can have that guarantee? Now, I have no problem at all with what is being, that was a pretty bold statement, maybe I shouldn't have said that out loud, with what's being proposed here, but how do we know that's what we're going to get? That has nothing to do with you.
No question.
I mean, you know, it just, lightning strikes tomorrow and the land changes hands, and it's rezoned, but it's rezoned to a pretty heavy industrial use, and then it's there forever. And I actually think what you're showing us is pretty cool.
Thank you.
So why aren't we doing that?
Designated standard industrial in the comprehensive plan, so we felt that even though we don't have that, we were just pointing that out, but I-2 is certainly appropriate in a standard industrial, and the other industrial that's already been approved along.
So even if, God forbid, he does get struck by lightning, and then it just goes away, and it's just I-2, we're okay with that, is what you're saying?
Janice, I had the same question, but when I looked at the map more closely, this thing is in a sea of straight I-1. This is I-1. If it's I-2, I think it'd be different, but it's I-1. I don't see why, why it's needed after.
We're changing this.
They're going from I-1 to I-2.
I-2.
Pardon? They're going from I-1 to I-2.
I understand.
Okay.
But look around it, it's, it's.
I assume you've got building plans and.
Yes.
That's what we're looking at?
Yes, sir.
So you're ready to turn dirt as soon as you.
As soon as we get the okay.
I'm all right with it.
I'm all right with it too, and, you know, is there any protest?
No. No one signed up? Recommend approval. We have a motion in second to approve item 17. Cast your votes. And it's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 18, PUD 1568, application by WP Land, rezon 8101 Northwest 150th Street.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, Anthony Mirzai, who's also here, and Kendall Dillon, who's also here. This application was deferred a month. We had an original application that wasn't squared off like you see it now. Originally, it extended further to the west down 150th, so we resubmitted our, our PUD and site plan to squared up as you see now. In our PUD submittal, we do have a conceptual rendering of how the site could lay out. In our PUD, we limit the uses to match what has been approved across the street at the southeast corner of 150th and Council. Additionally, we have limited our sign height and done all the other things that the planning commission recently has requested of applicants on commercial developments. I am happy to say that we agree with all the technical evaluations as written, and we require no modifications.
And how many would that be?
All of them.
All, all one of them? All one of the engineering one?
Yes.
No one has signed up, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, this, I wasn't too much in favor of this when it was designed the other way. I believe it'll work this way, I'd move approval.
Second motion. We have a motion in second to approve item 18. Cast your votes. And it's.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 20, C 6689, preliminary plat of Ashton Co., located west of High Wasey Road and south of 29th Street.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting, 1819 South Moore Road, on behalf of the applicant. Well, I think that majority of you are familiar with this, this project. It was continued twice on the rezoning, or continued once on the rezoning, and the last, the last time I was here, you sent the rezoning on to Council. the, yeah, the last time I was here, you sent the rezoning on to Council, went to Council, and the rezoning application was approved. So, we're back before you for the preliminary plat application. We agree with all the TE's and would ask for your approval.
It says private roads, but it, and I think we discussed that there would, that would be a gated area as well?
It will be gated, private roads.
Okay.
No one signed up?
I move to approve the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 20. Cast your votes. And it's approved.
Thank you. Item 21, C6659, final plat of Chisen Crossing 3, located south of Northwest 10th Street and east of Mustang Road.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor's Commissioner Brian Kuhn, with you as always representing the applicant. This final plat matches the preliminary plat that was approved back in September. Actually, we've added a huge detention pond since that time, and there are 11 TE's. We agree with all of them, as written.
How many of those 11 were preliminary TE's, Brian?
I don't believe, there may have been a couple of them, but because the detention pond changed, we added a detention pond. A lot of them are new.
Okay. No one signed up?
Move through.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 21. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you. Thank you. Item 22 and 23 were deferred. We have one additional item that we've added to the agenda. That is the vote in the public hearing on the deannexation for Yukon.
Which was previously presented to us. Your city manager for, or the attorney for...
I'm the attorney. My name's Mike Segler. I'm the attorney for the city of Yukon.
I remember you.
Happy to, we were here two weeks ago, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Everyone comfortable for the vote? Okay?
Move forward.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Cast your votes. And it's approved.
Thank you.
That concludes all the exciting items today. Planning commission members, any comments, discussion? Okay. Planning Department? Development Services? Municipal Councilor?
I have a question for the municipal council. I guess I don't have to ask this right now, but I was driving here today. I heard that the state legislature has acted to prohibit municipalities from further regulating oil and gas development and specifically fracking. Are we, are we involved in that spirited discussion out of the legislature? And I'm not familiar with the exact bill that passed. I know we were discussing it, and we were involved in the discussions on that, so I'll have to see what was exactly passed. Okay? If there were any amendments that we were looking at.
What I read was basically municipalities or local government can't prohibit drilling within their jurisdictions, although they can, they have some leeway in terms of separation from residences and other kinds of conditions, but they can't prevent the activity. That's the gist of the, the tenor of the article that I saw.
Huh. I'd be interested to know more about that.
Anything else? A motion to adjourn? And we're adjourned to 244.